Okay, I've got seven o'clock. So I would propose that we go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Long Beach December Town Council meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So we've got approval of minutes. The regular Town Council meeting of October the 11th of 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I second it. And Deanne, that was Mike Johnstone.
And J and M L. Okay.
Okay. Or Bill, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, she's doing it too. She's very attentive.
I think to approve minutes, we can probably just go with a oral vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got the council meeting minutes, Town Council meeting minutes of November the 8th of 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Mike.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And we've got the Executive Council meeting of December 1st, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, so those are approved.
I had one correction, Bob, if I could.
Okay.
The 10:21 council meeting minutes, the Fire Commission report, they stated that it was from Hazmat, the grant for the SCBAs. It's a federal grant and it said it didn't have an amount. It's about $120,000 or so, plus or minus another little bit. So it's a federal grant, not a Hazmat grant. The Hazmat guys are also getting new SCBAs under the same grant as is Michiana Shores. So just to correct it.
Okay. And there was a change in the Executive Council minutes?
No, the October 11th, right?
October 11th, okay.
10:21.
Okay, got it. Actually, it says here 10:11.
10:11, John. Is it 10:11 or 10:21?
10:11.
10:11, yeah, that sounds right. Okay, opening remarks, just a couple of changes with the agenda. I want to add the ethics policy to the agenda. I'm not sure that wasn't on there. And then I think there's an agenda item called Dogs on the Beach. And Ms., correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we simply passed that through resolution last time. This one should be Change in Dog Licensing Ordinance, which we all have a copy of. Chris, am I right? Did we pass the resolution allowing dogs to go down our stairs at the last meeting?
That's not my recollection was we had discussion that that resolution's not going to trump the ordinance. So we discussed removing what we wanted to do with licensing and dogs on the beach. And that one ordinance has both of those provisions. I provided you, for your consideration, a redlined version. So you could see the language as it exists now, if you make no changes. As well, and also lined out the provisions with regard to the licensing tags, et cetera. And there is one blurb in there about no dogs allowed on the town public beach properties. Whatever that applies to, presumably mostly stops at this time. But my recommendation is if that is your pleasure. So anyway, that's before you because that's the way to properly change. I know I don't want to get into that discussion as you're making amendments.
I'll leave them both on the agenda then, and we can figure that out when we get to it. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, Town Compliance Priorities was a placeholder, and I think that's where we should do ethics.
Yes, that's what I kind of figured, but I wanted to be sure it was added on there. Okay. Okay, so that's it for my opening remarks, as it was. Police Department report, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. For the month in November, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 118 calls for service, when compared to 141 calls for service in the previous year for a slight decrease of 23 calls for service. During the month, we documented seven incident reports, which resulted in five total arrests. Of the five arrests, they were all related to traffic offenses, of which three were for operating motor vehicle while intoxicated. In summary, the month was pretty average. Of concern, we had two investigations related to possible drug overdoses. One was in the Dunland Beach Association, where a 19-year-old was transported by ambulance to the hospital. And then secondly, we had a 42-year-old male in the town of Michiana Shores. Unfortunately, in that case, the individual was found to be deceased. The LaPorte County Coroner's Office is following up with an autopsy and toxicology reports. I would also like to take a moment to thank the Long Beach Civic Association. Last week, we received a generous donation, a grant donation of $3,721. And this will be used for individual trauma kits for all of our police officers. The trauma kits will also be placed in all of our police vehicles, and one will remain here at the Town Hall. These will be utilized. There's a national trend for police officers to have individual trauma kits on the person because if they were either shot and/or stabbed, they then have tourniquets, other medical supplies that are needed to assist in saving not only their lives, but the lives of individuals that we respond to calls on. I would like to thank Councilwoman Mary Lou McFadden for presenting our grant to Long Beach Civic Association. And again, a big thank you to them for the $3,700 that the Police Department received on this past Friday. And then lastly, behalf of my office and all the men and women here at the Long Beach Police Department, we'd like to take a moment to wish everyone a happy holidays, safe and healthy, Happy New Year. And thank you again, unless there's any questions.
Great. Thank you, Long Beach Civic. That's great. Police Commissioner report, John Wall.
I'll defer to the Chief. Essentially, we decided to defer our meeting until January anyway this month, so there really wasn't a meeting. But if there's anything more, we'll talk about.
Real quick, just to kind of highlight the November meeting, we thanked Commissioner Bob Gallagher for his years of service. We have on tonight's agenda the discussion for the nomination of the new Police Commissioner to our board. We talked about our Facebook initiative. For those of you that are residents that are watching tonight, we encourage you to follow us on Facebook. We're putting information on there, not only related to the Police Department, but also related to the town itself. And lastly, we discussed, we are canceling the December meeting. We will re-adjourn in January. And our meetings will be the first Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM via Zoom. Thank you.
And Chief, that's not a change in the time of that meeting, is it?
No, we are going to continue first Thursday, 4:00 PM on Zoom.
Okay. Volunteer Fire Department report, John Wall.
Our fire calls are down just a little bit from prior year. We're at 42 this year, over 46 for the prior. Month of November, we had a hazardous condition call that can be a gas leak or carbon monoxide call or power line down. We had five false alarms for a total of six calls. Our medical calls, again, are still up significantly over prior. We're at 121 this year, over 77 for the prior year. Month of November, we had a couple of respiratory calls. We had three sick persons and a lypistis for a total of six. So our response times are still well under five minutes. We're about four and a half on our medical calls and about 4.5 on our fire calls.
Okay.
Bob?
Yeah.
The Long Beach Civic also gave, I think, over $4,500 to the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department. And I believe it's, I knew I was going to be put on the spot because I didn't have that grant, but I think it's something to do with radios.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get some new portables with that, Mara. We appreciate it very much. Civic has supported us over the decades very well. It's a great relationship.
They got that. And just so you know, since we do have a lot of residents listening in, they also gave to the Garden Club of Long Beach to help sponsor the Art in the Park. So we're very pleased with all of that. And we appreciate the support of the whole town.
Great. Thanks again, Long Beach Civic. Fire Commission report, John Wall.
We're all not meeting again. We mentioned that last time until we get the capital plan in order. We hope to have that at the point where the Town Council will vote it in for starting off the process to get some significant bids and things in for the station and the truck. We did, we are in the process of doing our proficiency test this month. Last weekend, this week, on Monday nights, the guys come down and we actually run them through a series of practical tests. They have to show knowledge of all the equipment and the trucks and the vehicles. And then the written test will be next month. That's a little departure from our typical procedure, but we found that it's a little more convenient for the guys that are working to get in there on a couple of different nights. Puts a little more load on the officers, but it's a good way to get them all down for the test. We did get the SCBAs. They actually were delivered to the station. And they're actually, if you take a hike over there, you'll see it's a sardine can once again. So we took delivery of all the new SCBAs. We do have to integrate those in. We have some other expenses related to that new purchase. We're going to a 4,500 PSI bottle. Gives us more time in the house for rescues and that sort of thing, and fire suppression. So we're very, very happy. We do have to upgrade the computer and some of the other equipment to accommodate that new technology. But we're very pleased with the grant itself and the quick delivery of the items. That's really all I have on the Fire Commission.
And the SCBAs, those are respirators?
I'm sorry, yes. Self-contained breathing apparatus. You're familiar with somebody that talks about SCUBA, that's self-contained underwater breathing apparatus. We are SCBA, which is self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the mask and the tank that mounts on your back after you put all your gear on. So that allows you to go into inhospitable environments for rescue and/or fire suppression.
Cool. Street Department report, Tom Doll.
Okay, for the past month, all of our trucks are set up for snow. We pick up, it ended Friday, went pretty good. We are getting everything cleaned up that was left from Friday last week. So I think that we should have everything cleaned up in town complete tomorrow. Most of the town parks were cleaned multiple times. We've been doing some updating of our information on our map system for drainage in the town. And work on next year's paving and drainage projects for grant funding continues.
Good deal. Street Commission report, John Wall.
Not too much more than what we did meet last month. There's not too much more to report other than what Tom did. Again, the 2022 CCMG paving application will be submitted by Hosp on our behalf later this month. And we hope to get the award early in the first part of the year. We're going after about a three-quarters of a million-dollar program. We've done million-dollar programs in the past. We hope to be successful with this one. It will entail a little bit of drainage work this year, so we'll see how that shakes out. As Tom said, he's finishing up on a lot of different things. We had a little flooding issue over there near Mara in Shorewood, which was corrected with the help of the Country Club. We got that straightened out. We do hope to purchase our new hydro excavator sometime in the first quarter of the year. The funds in the stormwater that everybody's been paying, the stormwater fee, are accumulating to the point where we think we can make that purchase. Right now, we're probably going to, you know, a little over six figures for that unit. We've been planning for that for a few years, and it'll allow us to clean out the brand-new drainage structures as well as the old drainage structures. And it also allows us to do emergency excavation without locates if necessary because it doesn't disturb underground utilities when you're excavating. Actually, it's high-pressure water, and you can do it for, use it for lots of different things. So it'll be a great addition to our equipment fleet. Last but not least, Bill touched on this at the Finance and Budget meeting. We did make our final payment on the 2021 CCMG, so we will not be bleeding over into next year like we did with the prior year CCMG payments. So that was a very successful project. We're all proud of it. And I think everybody's seen the result of all this state money being spent in our town. That's all I have.
Park Board, who's doing that presentation?
I will stop. The Park Board didn't meet last month because of the holidays, but they will be meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM by Zoom. So if everybody wants to stay up to date on what's happening with the Park Board, tune into March 6. Community Center report, going to the next one, Bob. Community Center met. They discussed ongoing maintenance issues. There is a couple that's possibly interested in renting Room 7 for a Pilates class that uses machines. And Sarah is scheduling a lot of winter activities. So it's important that everybody wants to check and see what's going on. Check the Long Beach Activities Facebook page to keep up to date on what's going on in the Community Center. So that's it.
Great. Water Board, Mary Lou.
Actually, Greg's going to cover that. He's on tonight.
Oh, okay.
Water Department Advisory Committee met on November 22. I'm reporting that all water samples have been done for the month, including last year's 2021 state sewage affectants. Water meters still have work to be read for that month. We had some discussion on a follow-up with bits of engineering to confirm that the non-hurting repairs to the water tank have a red. And this report could be scheduled at the same time as regular maintenance over the coming years to keep the cost down. We are also in the process of preparing an addendum to our cross-connection policy to be implemented in early 2022. We'll have some more discussion in that going forward. That's all I have to report. Water Department Advisory Board will not meet this month due to the holiday schedule. Next meeting will be January 24 at 9:00 AM via Zoom.
Okay.
That's my report.
Budget and Finance, Bill.
Yeah, we have met on a couple of occasions. And the major focus, as John Wall has mentioned, has been on putting together the capital plan. And we're hoping to pursue that and get further along by January. We're waiting for our tax receipts, which should be coming in probably within the next week. And I'm hoping we have as much as we got in the first half. The one thing that later on in the meeting, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the garbage. I would like to have a review in January with maybe a couple of the council members, maybe those on the Budget and Finance Committee. I do believe that we may have to bump up. We have not, we have not raised the garbage charges for about two or three years. And the bid that has come in from Republic is a 4% increase. It still is within range of what we're doing, but I think we need to look at that and also look at our leaf expenses. But other than that, I think we're in good shape.
Okay, Human Resources, Bill.
We have had a couple of Human Resources meetings. Major, let's talk about the PTO policy, which is later on in the agenda. And of course, to review and put together the salary ordinance, which is also on the agenda. That's all I need to report on.
Okay. Building Commission, we've actually had two meetings of Building Commission. First, November 12. I'm just going to hit the highlights. Some beach stairs at 2216 were denied. Those were wooden stairs that don't comply with the stair ordinance, which is part of the lakefront protection ordinance. 2014 Oriole Trail, a non-conforming lot with side setback issues. Needs a variance was sent to the Board of Zoning Appeals. 2810 Elbridge Way, solar panels. First one we have approved with the new solar ordinance was approved. December the 10th, we had another meeting. We had issues with a contractor who has not been building what he says he's going to build. And a hearing has been scheduled to talk about what the possible repercussions of that are going to be. This is not the first time that's happened with this particular individual. We discussed 2300 Lake Shore Drive. Chris, our attorney, is working on a license agreement. That property has a patio and deck along with part of a driveway on town property. We're trying to get that situation resolved. 2016 Lake Shore Drive Beach Stairs. We're going to try and see if we can't take a look at all the illegal beach stairs that have been built and then get that list to Chris so he can proceed in terms of getting those illegal beach stairs taken down. That legal process is proceeding, but we have to get a list to him, and so that'll be done shortly. 1612 Indianapolis, legal process is proceeding again. Another situation where things were built without a building permit. Can't read here. 2311 Hazel Time. That's been sent to the BZA. Again, I think they're increasing, they want to increase the volume on a lot that's non-compliant as it's too small. 2716 Roslin Trail, there we actually did approve something, allowed somebody to connect a garage to a house. And a 2021 Silver Tip, again, a non-conforming property, about 11,000 square feet. My eyes are not good. And they want, the garage they want to make is too tall. But the more, the more important thing is, actually, it's not a problem with the garage because it's a attached garage. But they want to increase the volume on a non-conforming lot, and that also is going to be sent to the BZA. Issues at 1900 Lake Shore Drive were allowing the contractor to basically, I'm sorry, stop work order there is still in effect. At 2516 Lake Shore Drive, we lifted the stop work order to allow the contractor to do some repairs on basically a foundation. And that's it from that particular Building Commission meeting?
I have a question on the Tom and Jennifer Nash. Did we settle that? That was 1602.
Yes, this is Chris. I can speak to that. I mean, I think I've updated previously, but that order has been entered. It was resolved and by agreement and dismissed. And so ultimately, we're just.
What was the fine for the Nashes?
I don't know offhand. I believe, and I'm speaking from recollection because I wasn't prepared for this question, but I believe that the total was approximately $5,000,000. But I can, I'll get you a more definitive answer because it's, we signed a stipulated dismissal with their council. And then that fine, it's part of an escrow check that's waiting at the title company, which was part of a resolution at their closing. So it was paid from some closing proceeds when the property was sold.
Okay, you'll get back to us?
I will, and that check will be sent to Bill for deposit. So yes, you'll have a definitive answer with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Board of Zoning Appeals, that meeting, due to the fact that we only had three of five members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, all the public hearings, all the people who were there for public hearings requested to postpone their meeting until the meeting on 12/14, which is tomorrow night. So tomorrow night, Board of Zoning Appeals will have a fairly full docket. Advisory Plan Commission, due to the fact that we had no ordinances that needed their attention or change of address or anything like that, that meeting was canceled. And I'm not sure when the next Advisory Plan Commission meeting would be because so far I'm not seeing anything on their agenda either. Bill, the Building Permit Revenue Report?
Building Permit Revenue Report for November 2021. 16 permits totaling $269,244 with revenue of $3,760. Three electric permits totaling $452. November legal expenses totaled $11,001.70 with $10,662.50 to Brazee, Nelson, and Janes, and $349.20 to Ogletree Deacons, Nash Smoke, and Stewart PC. May I have a motion to approve the reports and claims?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A second.
Coker.
Second, John Coker. Let's see, so we probably need to do this roll call because it's not minutes. John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye, John Coker.
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou McFadden?
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished business. The Town's Executive Order update. At the last Town Council meeting on 12/9, the Town Council voted to reinstate the mask mandate at the Community Center. I believe that's been, that's happened now. I don't feel we need to make any other changes at this point, but we did feel that we needed to reinstitute the mask mandate due to the increasing incidence of COVID in the county. We're now red like we were back before, when we were doing it before. In the past, we'd closed the building. I don't think we need to do that at this time. My personal feeling is we don't need to make any changes in our executive order update at this point. Anybody on the council feel differently?
I'd agree with you.
Okay, Lake Shore Drive Sewer Update. John, do you have anything for us there?
We had a meeting with the engineer to review some preliminary drawings. They're well down the road on the bid package. We still anticipate a late December, possibly early January bid date. However, we did, one of the major pieces of business at that meeting was NIPSCO had some representation there. We actually did it with Zoom with them. So their engineering company that they've hired to help them with the relocation and/or conflicts with gas lines on Lake Shore was at that meeting with us. So we spent quite a bit of time discussing methodologies and locations and actually ran to the drawings with them, kind of correcting some of their misinterpretations. And they are preliminarily telling us that they'll have their relocation work scheduled for fall of 2022. That sounds like it's a problem. Normally, you have to wait till NIPSCO is complete with their work before you can start on your own. But hopefully, if this works the way we planned and they can actually commit to that, they've said they will come back to us in January, hopefully with a more solid commitment for the fall for the relocation work and also a little better idea of the total extent of the relocation work. So once we tie them down to an actual completion date, then we hopefully can still bid when we hope to and get some numbers in. Obviously, if the contractors don't know when NIPSCO is going to get out of the way, that's problematic from a cost standpoint. So right now, that's where we stand, and they have promised to meet again. We actually set a meeting date in January. So if we can tie them down a little tighter, then we should, we should continue down the same road we're on now with progress.
Yeah, this is Bill. Just a question, just as people ask, how long does it take? And I realize paving, you know, even a million dollars, I think, doesn't take as long as I thought it would because it's all an algorithm that somebody fits in. But so based on length and number of stubs, is that something that, I mean, can they turn a bid around in a couple, three weeks?
Yeah, they'll typically, I don't know, a couple of weeks would be adequate, Bill. They've, they'll probably, there's actually some statutory requirements, I believe. But I would imagine you're going to have to give them about 60 days. Not 60, I'm sorry, 30 days. So but that timeframe includes, you know, when you release the drawings, you have to have what's called a pre-bid meeting where you allow them to review the drawings for a week or two. Then they can come in and ask questions. Then you issue what we call addenda, and those clarify the questions, and then the bid date occurs. So that, two weeks isn't too bad if there aren't any questions. A project of this magnitude will definitely have some questions. So we have to count on probably a 30-day process for that bid, I would imagine.
Okay. PTO policy review and approval. You know, I have questions about the numbers on the PTO policy. Um, you know, I have questions about the numbers on the PTO policy. Uh, I would like to recommend that we delay action on that, maybe hold a special meeting so that we can discuss that in some detail. Um, we can see all the numbers, um, calculate the, uh, total cost to the town of those. Uh, and, you know, basically calculate exactly what we want to do. I, this is a fairly big, big proportion of our, uh, town budget. In fact, it's the major portion of our budget, which is employee compensation. I'd like to make absolutely sure we know exactly what we're doing, what the, uh, effects are going to be. And, and frankly, you know, like we did last year, we enacted some changes to our compensation, not January 1st, but we did go ahead and affect all those retroactively. Uh, so that would be my thought is to make sure we know exactly what we're doing with this policy. Um, I'll open that for discussion.
Uh, we've, we've been, this is, I'm not the author of this policy. I'm just, Mark and I are just following direction from the July meeting that was held. And, um, we, the Human Resource Committee, when they met, because you're, you come in and you listen to that meeting and you were fine with that. Actually, in September or October, you asked me to run it by the, um, employment law attorney, which we did, and there were just a few grammatical errors. And then you came back and you would like to, you didn't like, one of the things Mark and I recommended beside the point was to let them bank it. It's not carryover. It's like for an emergency or something catastrophic that they hold on to. And so at the last Human Resource Committee, you made it clear you really didn't like that.
Yep.
And so we moved forward to, we would drop that and just move on with it. It wasn't my, uh, one, one of the reasons, and if people are listening to this, that you wanted this is that we need a way to, so that Mark can plan for time off, and it gives people a way to save their time or, um, at, at other companies I've worked, we use it as kind of an insurance policy. If they have a catastrophic, catastrophic illness, it kicks in before their short-term disability so that they don't lose any pay, and it's huge. So we feel that we've gone through all the costs in the July meeting. Um, I don't know why, why you're, don't want to move forward on it. It, we've, you said what they were eligible for, and I, I think it's, would be, I think it would be prudent on our part to go ahead and approve it.
Now, I, I, as an individual, I'm not ready to vote for it at this point. I want to see the numbers. Right now, I know the sick time allowance payoff is 1.9, um, 1.9% increase in payroll, additional holidays, uh, was not calculated properly and that the calculation, uh, figured that the police officers worked eight-hour days, instead they worked 12-hour days. So those numbers aren't correct. Uh, and even with the eight-hour days, uh, that was another 1.4% increase on payroll. And in addition to the merit increases, I think, you know, we're starting to talk real money here. I think we need to understand exactly what we're doing.
Okay, the other thing is we also need to remain competitive. If you listen to the news.
Absolutely.
Right, on how people are trying to attract and retain people and what even in LaPorte County they're doing. Um, as I said, I wasn't the one that instigated it. I was following your orders. So I would like to see us move on this. We've spent a lot of time on it. We are waiting for this so we can finish the handbook up for January 1st, and it's been put, it's been kicked down the road every month. We moved on what you didn't like, and we said, okay, we'll get rid of the bank part.
I, I'd like to make a comment if I can. I think Bob sent you guys, sent the HR committee a letter back in November, Mary Lou, and I know sometimes I'm not copied on things because I'm not a formal member of the HR committee. But did you guys answer that letter yet?
We did at the meeting. What didn't, what do you think we didn't answer?
No, I just, my, my question's pretty direct, Mary. Did you answer that letter for him? Did you, did you hit on all those points that he asked you?
Well, I met with, okay, after, one of the things that Mark suggested in the HR committee is that I meet with the employees, even though it's a public meeting. So I met with the Street and Water. We met our HR committees on a Thursday. I met with them on Monday, and I just went over the minutes and told them what we were doing. And, um, he felt that was important so he knew, so that they knew what we were thinking and what we were doing. And we talked about, um, I'm very comfortable with the police department tracking their time. I've seen what, how they do it. He has an administrative assistant. And after talking to the Street and Water Department, I'm very comfortable with that. And then I only have two, oh, see, one other full-time employee, and that person reports to Bill. So those were some of the things that Bob addressed, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it. And also, they said they would copy me on it if I wanted to run a log or keep track of it.
I guess, uh, they're tough to the town council as to what they want to do. Are we, are we ready to proceed on that? Or would we like to have a special meeting to understand it all? What under, how much, how can I phrase this? Is the increase in our budget over the previous year? Bill, do you know?
It's, it's a, it's about 3%, yeah.
And, and then, do you have an idea that?
There are other due to the budget, John, so that, yeah.
Do we have an increase in, in revenue? Do we have an idea what that would be?
I guess we're going to have to see, see what we're, what we've got. But yes, we should have, we should have a 4% increase in revenue, yeah.
Well, the merit increase alone is 3%. And so you've got to add the sick time and the additional holidays to 3%. So it's substantially more than 3%.
What about the cost?
All I'm suggesting is, is if we're, if it's going to be an increase, is it increasing us more than the revenue we take in? I mean, you know, that's a recipe for disaster, if it's.
Well, first of all, John, the PTO policy isn't an increase in anything because this is something they had. They had vacation.
Right.
They had sick leave. So it's, it's a wash if you want to think about it that way. You probably, you do have some people that didn't use their sick leave, but this was a, we thought this was a win-win for the employees. Um, and for the town, okay? That's what we're looking out for. And we started on this PTO, PTO policy in the spring. We met in July at, at a joint meeting with HR and the town council, and it was a public meeting. So I'm just wanting, you know, how long, what else do you want to know about it? You've seen everything. The costs are the same as they always were. We didn't give anybody any more than they already had with their vacation and their sick time. Now it's called paid time off, which is PTO.
Well, Mary, let me ask you one quick question here. Just a minute ago, you said you were deferring to Bob on banking hours. Uh, the, the last, and again, I, I know I'm not in all the HR communications, but if we're going to, if the town council's tasked with approving this policy, we, we, we all should have the latest version. So the last one that I received.
The latest version, just go back and disregard the bank and the hours. It was a separate paragraph. It was a way if somebody had a lot of hours and they could only achieve.
Mary, could I, could I finish before you interrupt me? The, the last policy that I've seen was a draft on October 7th that Mark sent out. Now, if you guys have a newer one that corrects some of the things that Bob brought up and/or takes the bank hours out, then we should have seen it before tonight so we can make a decision. You're pressing for a decision, but I don't think we've seen the final version yet, and particularly if we're still discussing some things that are going to be removed.
Plus, I'd like to see all the numbers and go over them all at one time. I'm not saying that this isn't going to happen, Mary Lou. I'm just saying I want to be comfortable with the decision, and right now, I'm not comfortable with the decision.
Okay, so then moving forward, January 1st, they'll have vacation and separate sick time, correct?
I'm hoping that if we can pass a PTO policy, that we can retroactively have that take effect January 1st.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm hoping we can do, but we need to see the numbers to understand the implications of what we're doing.
And we need the final version. Like I say, the last one I've seen, unless you guys have a newer one, the last one I saw was dated October 7th. Is there a newer one?
John, we did not make a newer one because this just happened in December, and we said that we would recommend, so we're not going to retype the whole thing and take out the bank policy. That's what we're talking about tonight, to remove it. That's what the HR committee recommended. If you approve it, we'll drop it and we'll have a brand new one first thing in the morning.
I might suggest that if we can have a quick, you know, there's other issues we're going to talk about a little later in the evening. We're going to talk about salary increases, a 2022 salary, uh, ordinance proposal. I, I suggest that, I mean, I don't care if we do it a couple of days from now, but I think if we could get a working group, just get us together again with the HR and the budget guys and, and the council guys. If we could just hammer some of these things out, we could do it real quick. Nobody's, I don't think you're, we're not on the same page here. Nobody's suggesting that we don't want to do this. We just want to make sure we understand it all the way down to the end because it's pretty significant for the town. You know, everything we change affects the town. For instance, you know, when you look at the, the spreadsheet, and we'll talk about this when we get to the salary ordinance, but we're kind of on the same subject now. That spreadsheet you do, you guys did a nice job. You showed us the current hourly rate, the 22 planned increases, the percentage, and then what that effect is on the base pay. But in terms of the kind of things that Bob's asking for, you really need to apply the additional cost, the benefits, the taxes, all the other things to get to the final number so we can understand how that affects the budget. So it's not just the base pay differentials, but there's other things involved. Same thing with the PTO. We kind of have to be just a little more scientific if we're going to talk about budgetary impacts for all these policy changes.
I would just, I would just add that, um, I see, I have a little greater urgency on this, and I think we ought to be able to wrap this up before year-end. If it's through a special town council meeting, so be it. But I think we need to wrap it up before 12:31.
And do we want to set a date for that meeting now?
Why not?
I'd like to.
How about between Christmas and New Year?
I'm here until the 29th.
Good. I got a son getting married on New Year's Eve, so that's, date is out. You're here till the 29th. How about, uh, Monday, the December 27?
Monday.
Does that work?
Works for me.
7:00 PM?
Right. Is Tuesday is December, is it 27?
That's a Monday, Monday, the 27th.
It's a holiday for the employees. I don't know if you care.
What about Tuesday, the 28th?
Uh, I can do, uh, I can do that also.
Okay, that's just one more day to get prepared.
I've got to pick up some people at the airport, but, but I'll be, if we do it in the evening, I'm good.
The other thing, Bob, is that we, you know, the end of the, the end of the year meeting is for you to also, it should be fairly quick, but for you to, whatever checks that I've written can be approved at that 28th meeting also.
That sounds good. So we're good at the 20, for the 28th?
Yes.
All right, let's do that then.
One more time.
I'll set it up at Zoom at 7:00 PM.
Okay, cool.
And I, I mean, do we want to get Carl involved to help you out, Mary, with getting the rest of this stuff assembled?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because I have the, I know the numbers. Um, but I want to make sure that you guys, it seems like every time Bill and Mark and I come up with any spreadsheets, every, we have like three Monday morning quarterbacks helping us. So I would love for Carl Sinder to help me.
Okay, I'll set that up on Zoom then.
Okay, and I'll, I'll have Bill help me get in touch with Carl Sinder because I haven't contacted him.
Okay, and then I would suggest.
Just so we're, just so we're clear, you know, anything to do with compensation needs to, you know, you're the HR person, you know this. Anything to do with compensation needs to, if we're going to look at it in terms of overall costs, it's got to include the Bennys and the taxes and everything else so we understand what we're talking about.
Well, hopefully he'll be able to do it in a timely manner because I'll get in touch with him tomorrow.
That'd be great. All right, I would suggest we do the same thing, discuss the holiday schedule for town employees at that same meeting.
Yes.
And then 2022 salaries, John, I think you've done some research on that. I think we've passed a salary ordinance already, right?
Well, what we did, we passed the 2021 salary ordinance, and that established the numbers that the HR guys, the HR group has used on this new spreadsheet dated 12/10. So that spreadsheet that's proposing the new salary increases is 12/10 dated. We got that from that crowd then. And then we passed back, and I believe September, we passed a philosophical statement that said we were going with a 3% across the board increase for all the employees. The town council passed that, and we said we might adjust some of the outliers. So right now, um, there's a significant difference between what the HR committee presented on the 10th of December to us and what we passed in September. That's another reason, I think, to see, you know, total costs, Mary, not just base pay influences, but total costs so that when we look at this, we can say to ourselves, okay, this is how much we're spending in total to make these adjustments that you guys are proposing.
John, we talked last year, after the survey was done, that there were some outliers, and we wanted to make them whole so that we could attract and retain people. And at that time, four of you chose, well, probably three of you chose that we wouldn't do it in one year. So that hasn't changed, and those people have remained here. And if you look, Mark and I, Mark has been very helpful going and telling us what's going on. LaPorte just gave their police officer 17%. They gave their office people 5%. Michigan City gave 5%. LaPorte County gave 6%, and we are well within that range, and we're well within the salary survey for that. And I just think, you know, the, this is a public meeting. The employees listen to this. The last meeting you guys had on budgets, I had a reaction from one of the employees. They said they thought they were listening to a Zoom meeting at McDonald's on the Boulevard for people that don't show up. We have great employees, and they've been with us for a long time and the.
Mary, I love the cheerleading, but I don't like you characterizing our budget and finance meetings that way. This is a great, uh, podium for you for these kinds of comments, but they really aren't your main to the discussion. The discussion is, if you guys, if you guys do your, if you guys do your homework, get the numbers we're looking for and asking for, we'll be more than happy to sit down and analyze this information and make a good decision. That's all we're asking for. We're not, we're not trying to be great, be, be great the employees. We all love the employees. We're all on the same page there. I really don't want to hear another epistle about how great the employees are. We all are on the same page there, and I don't like you, uh, characterizing the budget and finance guys negatively in a public meeting like this. Let's just have our meeting on the 28th. You present some factual cost information. Again, you just gave this spreadsheet to us on the 10th of December. You need to give a little time for people to digest this stuff so we can make intelligent decisions.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's, there's two issues. We have our employees, but we also have to prudently spend our residents' tax money. You know, I mean, it, unfortunately, it's, it's too easy to, for us to spend other people's money, and I think we need to give it serious thought. Um, is there a motion on the 2022 salaries?
I propose that we analyze them at the 28th meeting with the stipulation that the costs, including benefits and all the costs, uh, insurances, their taxes and insurances on these numbers are presented so that we can analyze the overall budget impact.
Okay, and the plan would be to?
I don't want to, I don't want to make a motion to have a meeting, and we get there and we're looking at the same information. As long as it's comprehensive information and we can analyze it intelligently, then I'm, I make a motion, we do that in addition to the PTO policy and the holiday policy on the 28th.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All favors, say aye. Oh, you know what, never mind, can't do it that way. John Wall, John Coker, you're an aye, John Wall?
Yes, sir.
John Coker?
Yeah.
I'm an aye. Mike? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Okay, and Mary Lou?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a meeting schedule. I will get it on Zoom and we'll hopefully be there. And that's a public meeting, by the way. Um, refuse contact, contract renewal?
I have received, unfortunately, it came in very late. I've been pressing Republic for quite a while, and I finally got something late in November. Um, they have provided a, a bid of three consecutive years, each with a 4% increase. Um, my, that recommendation would raise the, the, the current fee from 1475 a household to 1534 a household. I have researched other, there is a local firm that has given me, and this is just a ballpark, so I, we, we cannot, we got to check details of the, of the qualifications, financial and other. But, uh, he has given me a, a, a. But he has given me a, a estimate of $13 a household. There's a lot of work to be done. I have not heard back from Waste Management, but they, I'm sure will be, be interested. My recommendation is, just because of the latest of the hour, is that we, that I send this contract to Chris Willoughby with the, with a stipulation that we want to do a one year contract and we may decide we want to do a three year deal with Republic. But I, I don't think it's, it's appropriate to try to change so close to the end of the contract and everything. So I'd like to get a renewal for, or a recommendation or an approval for a one year contract. And I will, I've tried to reach the vendor today and it was not unsuccessful, but I will try again tomorrow. But I'd like, I'd like somebody to make a motion unless there's some discussion, if you want to do something else. I mean, I suppose we can try to just make a change in the, in the middle of the month, but I, I think it would be, it would make sense to try to do a one year deal and then spend next year trying to find out whether we can do a better, we can do a better contract.
I'll make that motion. So basically to, to continue it for one year.
With Republic for one year, yeah.
Second, Mike?
Any other discussion?
The only other point I'd like to make is when that sewer project's going on, it will be kind of a pain for the garbage guys, so I think Bill's making a good point, if we can keep the same crew on for one more year for sure, I think that's a good, that's a good way to go.
Yeah, it's, to me, one of the things that I feel that, you know, I, I just, I'm not sure whether saving $2 a month, if that's turns out to be what we can do, is going to be, you know, I mean, it will, it will not cost the town any more money, but our job, I know, is to be the stewards of the, of the residents' money too. But I, you know, it may turn out that, that the $24 a year that you save me may be $24, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want saved, but, but that's, that's not part of the motion, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Otherwise, John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, next on my agenda is the ethics policy. I think we've all had a chance to look at that and.
Is that the town compliance priority?
Well, that's, that's what's listed as town compliance, but I think it was meant to be, as, as Bill said, a placeholder for the ethics policy.
Okay, that's good.
We've all had a chance to look at that. I had just a couple of comments on that. One is, is that this ethics policy basically says that no relative of a town council person can serve, can, can be an employee of the town, whether that be a regular employee or a contract employee. And I guess, you know, and, and it actually spells out that Larry Wall, John's brother, is excluded from that and is grandfathered in. I appreciate that. However, I think if this policy had been in place, when we asked Larry Wall to serve as building commissioner, we would have had to say, no, we can't use you. And frankly, we haven't had anybody else apply for that position that's been open for, what, about three years? So my feeling is, is that saying absolutely no relatives can work for the town is probably, is, is going a little bit overboard. But to me, what we should be saying is that, for instance, with a John and Larry Wall situation, whenever any issue comes up with Larry Wall, John shouldn't have to recuse himself and frankly, shouldn't even be participating in the discussion. To me, that, you know, the problem is, we're a community of just 1,100 residents, we, we don't have residences, we don't have that big a pool to pull from. And my concern is if we start excluding people who are qualified, we're going to end up with less qualified people.
We haven't recruited for a building commissioner, we haven't run right now.
Yes, we have, it's, it's been running for three years.
Oh, where is it?
That position is open.
Okay, so we could find somebody if we wanted to?
No, that's the problem, we haven't, we haven't found anybody.
Okay.
If you want, Dr. Lemay, this is Chris and I don't want to steal Mr. Johnstone's thunder here, so Mike, please speak up. I, I just want to clarify what is before you. What is before you is a proposal ordinance that is part of the priorities that you guys have identified over a series of months and something that Mr. Johnstone has taken the lead on for this. And I don't know that the intention was to have the discussion tonight versus being ready to do that in January, but giving you, I guess, dovetailing what John Wall said earlier, plenty of lead time to analyze and consider the provisions in there. I, I will say that contrary to some thoughts, the state codes are pretty clear on conflicts of interests and, and what can and can't be done in positions that are, you know, potentially grandfathered. And, and we can get into those at any time you guys want to have a discussion, but I just want to clarify, of course, it's the council's decision to move forward with this. I have that open discussion or do it another day and I'll be quiet.
Well, well, the bottom line is, we got to follow the state code, you know, so if this can follow the state code, then so be it. But I know you can't have a relative under the supervision of the other, I mean, you can't do that. So as long as we can avoid all that, then, then there probably wouldn't be a conflict.
That's the way it is in business too, you're not supposed to have a relative reporting to you.
Yeah, so.
That's right, and that's why if John Wall, John Wall would not be in that position, he'd have to recuse himself and not be able to part of, be part of any discussion.
I, I would venture to guess that, well, I'm not guessing, anybody who has direct supervision, and the code is even more harsh, you know, if Chief Swistec wanted to hire one of his family members, it's even more clear, but the, the code is very clear about family members, everybody who's employed right now is, is fine. Had, you are absolutely correct that had it changed and it was in reverse and you wanted to hire Larry to be the building commissioner after Mr. Wall was on the council, you could not do that because he, he does have direct authority. But it's really not the point tonight. Everybody who, who is employed, works for the town, is contracted with the town, is fine now. It's going forward and having these policies, and it does put a bind, Dr. Lemay, you're not wrong in terms of being small town and what those options are, it just may have, you may have to go outside of the community in the future if you're not fortunate enough to have Larry in providing those services, et cetera, so.
So you're saying, even if, if John were to recuse himself, we couldn't hire a Larry?
Larry still answers to the council of which John is a member, in my opinion, would be if it were in reverse in the future, you would not.
Okay, all right, so.
Just, just, I guess I have a comment on this since I've been leading this whole thing. Chris, thank you for your comments and your clarifications. This is about going forward, not just so much going backward in terms of what's occurred in the past. And part and parcel to this will be, and we've talked about this in prior meetings, there'll be a document drafted by the council that'll, that'll be a sign off document and agreement with each one of our committee commissions and town council members that we sign off on conflict of interest on an annual basis. This ordinance is really the, is really the, precedes that process and it gets clarified in terms of code. From there, we go through the, go through the annual process of signing off on conflict of interest. So when, when Chris says this is about where we're going, is really what we're trying to accomplish here, not where we've been so much. We can, we can grandfather, we can deal with issues that may be in conflict with the code today, but we're going to have to deal with those issues appropriately. But really, this ethics ordinance is about the future and the conflict of interest documents and agreements are about the future.
And one more thing to add to that, I, I will say, as, as I'm informed now in the current status of elected officials and otherwise, most of the conversation that I have been involved with, with regard to alleged conflicts are, are not in my legal opinion conflicts at all. There is a state form by which certain people, elected officials, others, family, may have to execute annually. So I, I would say the only difference in what Mike is proposing here is it, it's taking the lead on getting rid of the appearance, not saying there is any impropriety at all. And I know some of you have executed state, the state form of conflict of interest when they don't, in my opinion, I've given that opinion, I've, I've said on several occasions, they're not applicable, but they've been executed for the sake of argument, to put them to bed. So this is just one of those, I guess, being forward thinking, I, I don't mean this in a bad way, it's probably overkill in a lot of ways in that it, it puts to the forefront, you know, as Mike has said, just to pet off those, and Mike, I don't want to speak for you, but that's what it does, it, it makes it part of the regular routine, or at least that's the intention in drafting, everybody signs it and it puts to bed those, those questions and, you know, the appearance of impropriety. Is anybody required, most of what's in there, everybody's already required to do. And so, you know, from there, I, I guess it's putting it at one spot so everybody can view it, everybody's subject to it, everybody.
And everybody knows. That's a good clarification, Chris, thank you.
Just one other, actually, one other question is, so John's daughter, Meg Collins, is the secretary for the Board of Zoning Appeals, I take it she's grandfathered in also, is that correct?
My opinion is that everybody that works for the town or contracts is, is covered under what the, even under the, let's say we had nothing else, the ordinance was read, you know, John couldn't have anything, could it be argued that John has direct oversight because he participates in appointments to the commission and the BZA? Yes. And do you approve checks? However, she would be grandfathered in because she was employed before he took office.
Okay, and so, and then just, just to take this to another possibility, if one of our present employees' relative runs for town council and gets elected, would they have to resign?
Would be the same as when John did, they were employed before John ran and he ran and was elected.
So they would be grandfathered also?
Yes, my, my opinion would be that they would be, it would be exactly the same scenario.
I don't think any of our town employees live in Long Beach, so you're safe.
Now, you never know, things can change. We are, we are a desirable place to live, so you never know.
Not affordable, but desirable.
Okay, all right, so.
The intent, Bob, is to bring us back at the January 10th Town Council meeting.
I think that would be great, I'll, I think that sounds reasonable, everybody agree to that? Good, I don't think we need to necessarily vote on that, let's just make sure it's still, that it's on there again for the next meeting. Chris, anything new with Public Works?
No, there's nothing to add at this point.
Okay, still a placeholder, we'll make sure it's on there. My understanding is that the deer survey results are still being tallied. Is that correct, Bill?
That is correct, both Renee and, and Deanna worked studiously to try to make sure that, because they wanted to make sure that there was no extra votes and they had to reject a few where they, people kind of slipped one in and everything else and we got some votes. So they, they made sure that, and we, we determined that if you own three houses in town, you do get three votes, but you don't get votes for your spouse and everything else. And so they've done all, and I think she's, I think they're close, but they wanted, they're so careful because this is kind of a controversial issue, so they want to make sure they had, they made sure everybody got a chance to vote. We have gotten a few additional ones and we, you know, we had it cut off, so we, we had to take them out of the, out of the count. So, but, but so I think, I think we should, by at least the next meeting, since we're not close to deer hunting season, we should be able, I'm saying by the January meeting, I think I'd rather than promise it for the end of December. In fact, I think the end of December should be checks and the, and the salary and PTO, so.
I think we've got enough to talk about, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next is the ordinance regarding dogs on the beach and licensing. Oh, Chris, I might understand then that this, this ordinance that you sent us talks also about, explicitly about dogs being able to use the stairs going down to the beach at the public stops now?
No.
Okay.
Because the current version makes a reference that just prohibits dogs on the beach proper, the town's beach property, that's how it's worded. What it does is delete that language. By resolution, by previous council, the power to regulate, the authority, however you want to term it, to regulate the beach stops was given to the park board. So you have a decision, if you want to include it by ordinance that they're allowed to use it, you can do that, or you can allow, I guess the issue is how much you want it to change and what process you want to follow. If you delete it, then dogs by definition are allowed and then the park board can determine what the rules and regulations are and they can do that easily. If you want to have it codified, we can simply make that revision and put it in there that dogs are. If you want it to be during certain hours, you can. The issue with that is that, do those times change and are you prepared to, to, you know, are there certain hours, you know, et cetera, that you, you want the dogs to be able to access?
Okay, so if we chose to leave it the way it is and pass this the way it is, then we could, basically, we could leave it to the park board to decide?
That's my opinion, yes. And, and right now, the only reference in the entire thing was, there's one under 90.24, which under the, I sent you the proposed changes, which carves out, carves up a lot of the current existing ordinances on dogs, there's so much that pertains to tags and licensing, et cetera. So the previous 90.24, that's the way it exists now, subsection C says, in no event shall any dog be allowed on any town public beach, whether or not on a leash. That's the only reference at all. So you can, you can change the provision and say, dogs are allowed on the town beach property and they're allowed, you can put time, this part is up to you as the council what you want. But in my opinion, you know, much like garbage, much like cans, different things at the park board, whatever rules they made, storage, et cetera, that they may be passing now or, or adopting. So it's up to you of how you'd like to handle that. The, the best, I mean, if you put it in the code, then it's codified and it's there for everybody, it's a little more of a process, but, you know, if you wanted to change it in the future, at worst, it's a couple of month process, right? If you do it by park board, they could have a meeting and change the rules whenever you want. So to me, it's about process versus anything and then making sure that whatever happens, whether it's by policy adopted by the park board or by ordinance, that it's communicated to everybody so everybody understands that Chief Swistec and, and his crew is having a little bit of sanity in dealing with the dog issues, if any.
Well, I had, I had thought we passed that by resolution last, last time, but I'm wrong, Mark, so I apologize about that. Do we want to leave it up to the park board or do we want to codify that?
I'd like to see it left up to the park board, they're, they're, got their.
Okay.
Things under control, in my opinion, and I think that'd be the best way to handle it.
I agree, Jen, if, if they can, they can analyze it after a few months in the summer and see if it's going to be a problem, then they can change the hours without us.
Right.
Two month or anything, I agree with Jen.
Okay. Anybody object to that? Okay, a couple issues I've had looking through this, in 90.16, it's about dogs running at large, and it talks about dogs having to be on leashes. I guess, I'm not sure we have jurisdiction to regulate whether dogs on the beach are leashed, because.
Well, I, I don't think that, I don't think this says that, right? This isn't a beach ordinance, this is. Well, I don't think that, I don't think this says that, right? This isn't a beach ordinance. This is for dogs. So in my opinion, this is to be read as, you know, Chief Swistec gets a call and says, you know, John Doe's dog is running. That's what it applies to. We're not saying that we're out of our jurisdiction. What we're saying is they can't run around without a lead or within a certain distance, right? So.
Okay, so we're talking on town property pretty much, or in the town, actually.
Out of their yard. Yeah, they can't run at large.
Okay. And then we also talk in here about doing away with licenses. 90.20.
And my understanding was because ultimately, over the course of many years, it seemed that many, if any, licenses exist, right?
Yeah. So if we're going to do that, 90.20B says, "If any owner shall have lost his dog, whether licensed or unlicensed," we probably can do with whether licensed or unlicensed, since we're doing away with the license requirement. So that would be the.
What is that? 90.2?
90, let me find it again. 90.20B. And it says there, whether licensed or unlicensed. So we probably can just do away with whether licensed or unlicensed. Otherwise, I think this looks okay. So we've got an ordinance before us. Chris, can we?
So let's be clear on this, right? If it hasn't come from the APC and it isn't zoning and there hasn't been process, meaning publication and public hearings such as the Florida ordinance last month, it needs to be approved unanimously to be able to take it up in the same meeting that it's being considered, such as this. So if you want to consider this tonight and have a first reading, you need to unanimously consider that to go forward and be able to suspend the rules and do it. Because you guys have done with other ordinance, because it'd be able to pass it in one. So that is the council's pleasure, but you need a unanimous vote to do that. And otherwise, you can do first reading tonight and then you'll have to move on to the next one.
All right. So I'd make a motion to consider this with the changes we've talked about on first reading. Is there a second?
Second. Mike?
All right. John Wong?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Okay, so we've made a motion and seconded and passed it to consider it on first reading. I'd make a motion to adopt this on first reading. Is there a second?
Second. Mike?
John Wong?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
All right, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and consider this on second reading. Is there a second?
I'll second John Wong.
John Wong, do you still want to vote for it?
Yeah.
I still do. John Coker?
I do.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
All right, so this is passed and is now the law in Long Beach. Okay, we put something to bed tonight. That's a good thing. Elections, the staggering of elections. I think we've all seen this ordinance from Chris. Any comments on it?
Before you guys have discussion, I just, and I certainly want to defer because this is Mr. Coker's baby. He did a lot of the heavy lifting, if not all of it, on the drafting. And so that part of it, I'm not sure what his intention and I'll defer to him, but it is the document that is at least the starting point for some of the discussions that you've put in place, you've discussed before, is to stagger the election of the town clerk and the council members. But not everybody, the whole slate is up every single time. And from there, I'll defer to Mr. Coker.
Yeah, I think the whole purpose behind all this is to get the, one of the purposes is to not have a wholesale turnover on the town council and town clerk, but also an important one is it would be, the elections would be held the same year as the county and national state elections are held. So the county gets the privilege of paying for our elections instead of Long Beach. I don't know what the elections cost us here, but I know it's several thousands of dollars that we would be saving that money by doing it, getting the election cycle on the same cycle as all the other elections. So downside of it is if the next election we would have would be next year or, yeah, 2023, correct? That would be just whoever would run, you'd only run for one year. And then the following year, there'd be a certain number would run for a four-year term and the others would run for a two-year term. And then when the two-year term is up, then they would be on a staggered year and then they would run four years. And so then everybody would be have four-year terms. But it's just going to take at least a couple of election cycles to get there.
It is. And I think another important point, this is the way to do it. You know, you guys can decide on the numbers. It is going to take multiple elections to get this thing in place. And as I pointed out before, I think in a memo that I prepared for all of you, just to give you the current law and the statutes of the state code, once it's passed, it can't be changed for a period of 12 years. So once you do that, it's in place for quite some time, right? And then, which makes sense. It's, there's a lot of time, effort, work that goes in and, you know, the policy behind it of making sure that people know how it works and when it works. So those are considerations and but important for you also, as you have one year prior to, whatever you do, whether you approve it tonight. My suggestion was, whatever you do, we still need to make sure we're coordinating a little bit, which I have already communicated and I know I communicated to Mr. Coker to make sure that the election board finds what we're proposing acceptable. So I'm working on that avenue. But you must, if you're inclined to move forward with this type of proposal and change the election cycle or the terms, you must do it at least one year prior to the next election. So while you have some time, we certainly don't want it to get down the road and we've, you know, another six, eight months, another year passes and now we're scrambling to do it.
And Chris, would we be in violation of any state statute if we decided after the next election to have the five elected council members either draw straws to see who gets a two-year term and who gets the four-year term? Or simply determine that the two highest vote getters get the four-year terms and the three lowest ones don't? Would that be a problem? Seems like that might simplify things.
I would need to think about that a little bit with the language of the code. I think it needs to be clear that what everybody's running for. And right now, you have five at-large positions plus the clerk, right? And so, you know, the clerk is easy because that's one office. The rest of them, we probably have to determine and I want to make sure. I don't know that answer offhand. I think we can dictate whose positions, you know, being the two highest vote getters might make the most sense, but I need to make sure that that, that that complies with the law.
So maybe you can bring that back the next meeting and we can keep this a work in progress.
Well, and some feedback too, right? Most importantly, I think that Mr. Coker and I would like the collective council's feedback and comments on, you know, what's being proposed. The language of it is pretty simple and straightforward, but if there's any other comments, you know, or positions such as Dr. Lemay's or feedback with that, you know, that will certainly give Mr. Coker and I direction.
Great. Okay, so we'll bring that back to the next meeting and then council members send your comments to Chris and we'll see what we have next month. Next, 2022 CCMG paving update.
There's really nothing to report other than what we already talked about, Bob, that, you know, we we put the application, the application will be put in on our behalf by Haas Engineering. We hope to hear something in January, whether we get, whether they accept it or they give it all of us, all of it to us or any of it to us. And then we can always reduce it later if we feel like we're squeezed financially. We don't have to do it all, even if they give us the money, we can give some of it back if we find that it's cumbersome.
Okay. Moon Valley land transfer. Chris, have we wrapped that up? Chris, Moon Valley land transfer?
Yep. Sorry, I just needed to learn how to take it off mute. I sent an email earlier to Joy and Natalie of Save the Dunes, just waiting for a recorded copy, but that is, everything is wrapped up there.
Good deal. So Bill, we can take that off the agenda. New business, set year-end council meeting date. I think we've done that already, right? 7:00 PM on the 28th?
Right.
Good deal. Police commission nominee, Mark, that was a nominee from the police officers, I believe, right?
That is correct, Dr. Lemay. The deputies had nominated Bob McFadden as their representative. We just need town council recommendation and approval on that.
I would move we approve Bob McFadden for that position. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? John Wong?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mary Lou? Don't vote against him.
I have to accuse myself.
Oh, you're right. You do.
I know him. Yeah.
You do, yeah. He's a relative, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, public hearing, additional appropriations.
Okay, I guess that's me. Just to explain to everyone listening, we are not borrowing any money to pay any bills, but because of the fact that we, we paid both of our paving contracts, 2020 and 2021, in 2021, we had a bill of about 1.3 million for the two, for the two vendors. To our credit, to the town's street commission, Tom Dolph and Haas Engineering, we did negotiate a reduction in the, in the costs during all that time so that we, our 2020 bill was reduced by a bit. But what we, what we have to do now is we have to have, we have to have an ordinance because the State Board of Accounts says you didn't budget for all this expense. And even though you have money in the bank to pay these bills, we've got to make this, we've got to make these additional appropriations. So let me, let me get this, let me get this out here. We are, we are budgeting to, to increase the rainy day budget by 100,000, to the, to increase MVH restricted by 40,000, the SETIT fund by 145,000 and the CCD fund by 150,000. All of those to to cover all of the expenses that we have for these, for this double paving expense. So we have a public hearing and I guess we need to open it. Is there anybody who wishes to make a comment in opposition to this? Okay. So we close that portion. Is there anybody who wishes to make a comment relative to the approval of this additional appropriation?
All we're doing is moving money around, right?
Yeah, well, we're actually not moving money around. We're just, we're adding to the budget. I've already, I anticipated just because it was easier. I can always undo it if we can't approve it. But I have, I have actually changed the budget to affect these changes. So my negative figures on budget are not negative any longer. But yes, it's, we just approved it. No funds have gone negative, but the budgets have just had to be increased. Do I have a motion? Then I guess we can close that portion of the hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the additional appropriations?
So moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? John Wong?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Good deal.
We have to do this twice.
We have to do it twice?
So curious. We have still an ordinance.
All right, so we have to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yep.
All right, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
John Wong?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Lou? All right, so I make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance 2021-016. Is there a second?
Aye. I mean, yes.
John Wong?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
God, I'm getting good at this, aren't I? Community center usage. So we had someone who had arranged to rent the gym. We had opened up the building and we had done away with the mask mandate. One thing we did not do was we didn't decide, and this was my fault as much as anybody's, whether we were going to continue to rent the gym out to people for parties and things. Then things kind of went to heck in terms of COVID. We're now red. We had arranged to rent it out, I believe it was last Saturday, wasn't it, Bill?
Yes.
And so I got ahold of the folks who had arranged to rent it. It was for a party for about 50 people, I think a Christmas gathering. I made it very clear to them that they needed to social distance and wear masks. Since we'd made the commitment, we decided to let it go ahead and go. But I think we need to make a decision whether or not we want to continue to rent out. My feeling is as long as we have a mask mandate, we probably shouldn't be renting the gym out. Hopefully this isn't going to last very long, but we'll see. So that would be my recommendation.
Do we have a large demand for rental this time of year, Bill?
Yeah, sometimes we have, we have the demand. But I mean, we're also playing pickleball and doing other things in the gym too. The one thing, I'm not a Facebooker, so I'm not sure what other things that Sarah Pluster has going on in the gym. So, and maybe we need to, maybe we need to know what that is because because we're telling people they can't rent it and then we have groups of people coming in there, you know, you all know that when people want to pay money, I'm all over it. But, and so, so I, and people who don't want to pay money, I don't care if you use it or not, but but yes, it needs to be, we need to accommodate everybody. So, but you know, we, so I don't have a problem with saying we don't want to do it, but I think we need to be, I don't know whether you need to make a, make a, I suppose maybe you have a motion, but to me, you know, if we're using the gym for other things, why does a pickleball group, because they come in and and the players who wish to, they sit on the, they sit on the stage and come in, I guess it's losers out and then they come in and play. So there are other people who are using the gym. So telling people they can, maybe we need to say we can't do 50, but I'm not so sure that we're not using the gym already. And I don't think the pickleballers are wearing masks, but maybe that's true.
Bob, who do they go through to, so we know what's going on there? Maybe we need to think about it by a case-by-case basis, like Bill said, if it's over 50 people that we, you know, then we have to have some type of approval. But who approves who comes into that gym?
That's the community center committee, mostly Joe Jogman, is who the people go through. You know, I guess one concern I have about rentals is that we don't have anybody there making sure. And you know, one, one problem is when you're at a social gathering and nobody else is wearing a mask, if you just feel pressured to not be wearing a mask and, I don't know, it's hard. This whole situation is putting us all in some strange positions. I don't know. I'm open to suggestions.
I think table it till next month. Let's see where we go in the COVID thing. Because Bill doesn't have any upcoming Christmas parties, do you, Bill?
I have nobody. And maybe what we'll do is, you know, if I, if I need to, I will talk to Joe if I've got any, if I haven't. This was kind of an unusual situation because they rented the gym for just a family gathering for the last, the last three years. This is their third year. So, you know, I can at least inform them in the future that depending on how COVID goes, whether they're good for next December. But no, I don't have anybody else.
On that, on that same note of Bill wanting to collect money, we do need to keep that place where we can collect money because I was in the office the other day with Bill and the NIPSCO bill came in and it's doubled. And as everybody, I don't. And, um, as everybody, I don't know if everybody's, it's doubled, but I think we need to be concerned about renting out some of those rooms that during the COVID, they, the tenants moved out, and we can find new tenants for those places that pay rent.
Yep.
So we want to deal with each individual rental, uh, and let maybe Joe talk to, to Bill?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with that. Uh, on that same note, uh, we have someone who'd like to rent out one of our rooms over there to teach Pilates. There was some concern as to whether the town manager would need that room, but I think we have another room available. I understand there's two rooms over there. So if we do hire a town manager and decide to use one of the rooms over there, uh, that would be available. So.
Which room would be the Pilates?
Gosh, you know.
Seven, I believe, is what they were talking about, which was the, which was where Jim Price used to be way down and across from Laura Lee's yoga.
It faces the tennis court, so.
Yeah, where it's an empty, we have an empty room where Amy Shen was. And we also have room, uh, 13, which I know has been kind of a, you know, the, the park program slops over and flops over into that. But that is also, uh, a room that probably, I know that Joe has used it for kind of a semi-office, but I, I really think that, that that one could be, could be split in half. You could probably put a town manager in one half and somebody else in the other half, so. So we, we have some space.
So I'd like to make a motion that we give the community center committee permission to, uh, our permit, our go-ahead to rent that out to the, um, Pilates people?
Please, seven, okay.
Mike seconded, and then you're ready for a vote?
I'm sorry.
Mike seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was distracted. John Wall?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Good deal, okay. All right, so we'll let the committee know that, and they can get ahold of them. Uh, town email address. So we have a recommendation from K Plus, uh, our cybersecurity folks, for us all to be on an LPDIN.com email address. Now, Mark, I understand that, that will cost the town some money to do that?
Currently, the town owns the domain LBPDIN. Um, we're looking at buying two domains, which would be the LongBeachIN.org, and then LBFDIN.org, which would be for the Long Beach Fire Department. So we would have to purchase two domains. Three years for each domain is approximately, you have to go seventy-five dollars for three years. So we're looking at about a hundred and fifty dollars to purchase the two domains. And then we'll have additional costs for each email. Um, just, it would be minimal monthly for every town email address that we would utilize. No different than what we have now, just, um, just a small cost. So looking at several, probably a couple hundred dollars a year. But my question is, before I purchase the two domains, which I kind of held off on purchasing the domains, um, to this meeting, I just wanted to make sure that we were good moving forward with their recommendation of going with the dot org, and then I can get the two domains purchased, um, because we already own the one, and then they can start setting up the email accounts. My only other question is, um, I got some feedback from some of the employees, like in the water department, they wanted to use a general email account, um, which I'm fine with. Um, I guess Lynn and Helen both would check that email account, whoever is working that particular day. In fact, it would save us from having to set up two accounts. We'd only have to have one. And then, um, the other thing is our recommendation was to use first initial, last name, and then the at, um, like whatever the domain would be. Some wanted particular email addresses. I'm good with that. Doesn't matter either way. So just looking for some recommendations moving forward.
Well, this is Chris, and before you guys move forward, this is in line with, you know, something we've discussed for a long time. And, you know, I, I, I not only think it's preferable, I think it's required. And so it's a long time coming in terms, it, it will go a long way to streamline some things and transparency and all of those things. So it'll, it will be a good thing for the town to have this centered and certainly kudos to all those who have worked on bringing it to fruition.
Okay, and then?
One question, Chris, for, I mean, at, at first I was willing to give a one W. De Funiak and an LBPDIN.org, but I'm thinking that it would make sense with a position, Deanna's, uh, email has always been deputy clerk. And to me, it, I mean, maybe it won't save us that much money, but, but that seems to work for her. Why, I mean, is there any reason why I, I can't go nameless? I mean, everybody knows that W. De Funiak or Bill De Funiak owns or gets the email for, but if there's something else in this position, will they not gain the, you know, would that, not easier than having somebody's name on there? I, I agree, the council needs to have their names on it, but, uh.
I, I, I don't think there's any harm, but that's a decision of what you all ultimately want to do. That, that's not the concern from a legal standpoint. We, we know who the clerk is and the deputy and the, the, um, those who want to find can find from, you know, town, town letterhead and, and the websites. So I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I, more importantly, that everybody starts using a town email.
About members of committees like advisory plan, commission, board of zoning appeals, and building commission, and maybe park board. We get FOIA requests for those folks sometimes.
I believe that anybody who works and is subject to, um, it doesn't matter to me, they, they should, now, there could be a general one, but there should be members. It may never get used, um, you know, as Mark said, and, and you guys have discussed. It, it's important to preserve and, um, you know, town funds and, and, but this is all money well spent, and anybody who's on a board or commission and that's a member and is doing work and they're having public meetings, in my opinion, should have.
Oh, all, all committees, really?
I, I, I think that that's, uh, th- those who have any, like I said, public meetings, those who are, uh, there needs to be a contact for them now. They're, they're, and so I'm speaking of APC, uh, BZA, all of those. Everybody should correspond and use that town email. I, I wouldn't want to use my personal email at all if I'm anybody, you know. So it makes sense for everybody to have, and Mark, I don't know what that undertaking is. It doesn't sound like it's, from a cost standpoint, it's not a, a big deal, but it certainly is going to streamline and make, let's say we get public records requests. It's going to be, um, it's going to behoove the town. It, it helps with retention, it, all of those things. So that's my strong recommendation, is that everybody have.
Okay. So, um, I'll make a motion that, uh, we proceed with best plan to, uh, develop town email addresses for everybody who does work for the town.
Well, I want to be clear.
I'll second it. Coker?
Chris?
Well, I, I want to, when you're saying do work, I think, just to be clear, as, as Marcus said, right? There are certain, um, departments that everybody doesn't need one, necessarily, if they're not communicating, right? So I think you guys could decide on that, but you know, look at county, look at, uh, other bigger cities. You have to decide who, I don't know if there's anybody who regularly corresponds, or, you know, for instance, the water department and, and those who are in the office with Deanna. Do they just simply have a, a separate one, or is it a general? Meaning a general email address that whoever's working that day. But again, boards, commissions, as every employee has one, that's fine. Maybe you start communicating that way. So I just want to be clear, because you said anybody who does work for the town. So I just want to make sure you guys are clear on your intentions.
Well, I would think like the water advisory board, you know, because we get FOIA requests. I don't know if we get too many for the water board, but, um, the idea of this would make those FOIA requests somewhat easier to, um, segregate out from personal email, right?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that the, uh, APRA requests, maybe you won't have many in the future, but who knows? It will certainly streamline things. That, that's the intention, right? So again, uh, or the intention is for retention policies, transparency, et cetera. That's, that's the position I'm coming from, and, and I, I would defer to Mark on his recommendations of the, the button of when, but certainly, I mean, I should move forward.
Is this, Mark, is this something that we could like easily do with, with, I, you know, I, I haven't set up a new email account since?
You just cut out.
He was going to say before dirt.
Oh, okay.
The one thing that the IT guys did say is you can continue to forward for a length of time, whatever email you've been using, so you won't lose communication. If you want to have an old email be forwarded into this, you can do that.
John's correct. You'll have an alias, which would be your current email. That'll be your alias going to your new email account. And then what I'll do is I'll move forward with purchasing the two domains. I'll work with the IT committee and K Plus on setting up the email accounts, and then I'll work with Bill to make sure that we set up the email addresses, if he wants clerk, deputy clerk, um, however we want to set those up. Um, we'll go ahead and get those accordingly, so that they, um, work for the individual departments.
I think Dr. Lemay went away. Maybe he's coming back here.
Yeah, he's gone. So we've got a motion on the floor to go ahead and proceed with the authorization, Mark, to take care of buying some new domains and coordinate with the IT committee and the rest of the department heads to get whatever emails they require. So do we, I think we already had a second, didn't we? Mike, did you?
I second it.
John Coker seconded. I'll do the roll then. Uh, Mayor?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I am in favor as well, so that passes. Okay, hopefully he shows up again, but, uh. County mail addresses, we did. HSA, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, yeah, we, uh, I know we had a discussion before about, you know, that right now the health savings account is paid at the beginning of the year, and, uh, we all agreed that we should not make a change for this year. But there had been a, a, a kind of an agreement at the, uh, or maybe a recommendation. I was in, I was opposed, but there was a recommendation that we change the health savings account to quarterly payments in 2023. Uh, my feeling on it is, when you do things like this, uh, you know, I, it, it says to the employees that we're trying to figure out a way to take money away from you. Doesn't benefit the town at all unless somebody leaves, uh, abruptly, either by, by, uh, termination or, or, uh, or choice. But, uh, you know, this is, I think Bob wanted, Bob Lemay wanted us to try to consider whether we would do this quarterly. My feeling on it is that we shouldn't, but, uh, and I don't know whether we need to do it at this meeting, but, uh, but that's.
I think we should wait till the December 28th, since Bob's missing in action.
Yeah, okay, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, Mayor. And actually, I think what we did at the budget and finance committee was we thought we could even push it off farther than that if we wanted to decide in January.
Yeah, I, I just assumed there's too many other things, yeah.
Yeah, just, just to be, just to, for clarity's sake, then, there's a couple of options. You could either be punitive with it, meaning we don't dole out the HSA to everybody in its entirety, 100% at the beginning of the year, and we dole it out on a quarterly basis, or you put in place a policy that says if somebody leaves in the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter, there'd be a pro rata crawlback, pullback of whatever HSA monies didn't get, you know, weren't authorized through the remainder of the year. So, so somebody puts in the first quarter, the three quarters that are left gets pulled back out of their pay when they leave. So those are the two options, I think, on the table, or leaving it alone and just awarding it at the beginning of the year, and then we take our loss.
Well, I, I would like to see it passed off till January, because it's not going to, we've all agreed that we're not going to change anything for.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Um, one, one other thing before we get to public comments, John, that, uh, we need to do tonight, uh, with the committee, and hopefully Bob will return, maybe he'll call in. Um, he asked at the HR committee that we, he wanted, we have quite a few people with sick leave left. Actually, out of the 11 employees, 10 still have a substantial amount of sick leave. So I figured out for him in October, November, and now December, if we paid up to three days, if we paid up to five days, what they had left were 50%. And he looked more at the 50%, so I would like, and the HR committee wanted to make that recommendation, and it was unanimous, that we approved that the employees can get up to 50% of their sick leave back for this year. So the cost to the town, unless somebody's taken a sick leave from last Thursday to today, would be about $4,600 for 50%. If we gave them up to five days, would be almost $9,000, and up to three days would be $6,400. So I make a motion that we pay them the 50%, because we can't do it in January, in December 28th. If we don't approve it, they've lost it anyway.
Uh, just to give the devil his due, I think Bob's point of view on this was sick days are not awarded PTO, so to speak. They're supposed to be used as, in the event of a sickness or a relative sickness, so I think.
This was his wording, John.
Mayor, just let me finish, would you? What, what, well, his point of view was that, you know, we had what was described as a little bit of abuse, whether, depending on which way you fall on that opinion. Sick days were being scheduled on the part of, of some of the staff, rather than used as true sick days. So they were using them as vacation days. It's problematic for the chief at that point for scheduling, and it does cost the town some money. I thought I saw Bob coming back in, give me a second.
There he is.
There he is.
All right.
We're in the middle of talking about sick days, Bob.
And you're, you're mute. I can't.
Muted.
You're mute, Bob.
Okay, I'm unmuted. So we're talking about sick days as far as on HSA?
No.
Uh, we don't.
This was part of the HR committee that you sat in on, and you asked me to figure out as of last week.
Right.
And so we have, out of 11 employees, we have 10 that still have a substantial amount of sick leave. And you asked me, I think in October, November, and December, to pick it, to figure out three days, five days, or 50%.
Right.
So unless somebody took something from Thursday or Friday, if we paid out 50% to the employees, it would be about $4,600. If we paid up to five days, it would be $8,800. And if we paid up to three days, it would be $6,400 in round numbers.
Yeah, so, and I think the rationale for paying out those sick days was that so people wouldn't suddenly get sick and use those days as vacation days. So to me, if that, if that's our goal, paying 50%, you know, because if, if we say three days, then everybody's going to have three days left at the end of the year. So I say 50% is going to, uh, hopefully prevent people from getting sick.
Okay. So I made a motion that we pay them, this is the HR committee, uh, that's what we recommended, and we were going to bring it, we brought it to the council, and I didn't see, and I didn't see it on the agenda, so I apologize.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, and I'll second that. Discussion?
Well, once again, I, I, I don't have any problem with doing it. The, um, that's 50% of base pay. There will be some additional costs, so that'll, that'll be a little more than what it's showing there. You're going to have payroll taxes and insurances and things like that, that, that are going to increase that number a little bit. So, you know, I don't have a problem philosophically with doing it.
Okay. Any other discussion? John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker? I'm an aye. Mary Lou? Mike? Okay. Did we discuss HSA?
Yeah, we did. We determined that because it doesn't add, it doesn't affect anything. Let's do it in January. We don't even want to do it in December because it's, you know, it's, we've got other things to do that are more important right now. Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, we can have that discussion. So just make sure it's on the agenda for them.
Carrying forward, yep.
Okay. Any public comments?
I'd like to speak. My name is Donna Cavanagh. Can you hear me?
We do hear you, Donna.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. A couple of things. First of all, a lot of the neighbors, second homeowners have asked me about the survey for the deer. I'm wondering when that will, the results will be available.
We're hoping next month, maybe.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that from the town council president. Thank you, Dr. Lemay. Also, several people at my Stop 21 have shown me videotapes of certain park board members taking little things that I have put at the stop, which is a public space. And I decorated it for 38 years. And at any rate, at Thanksgiving, I put a little pumpkin out there and it was stolen. And then recently, I put a little snowman at the stop, and that was stolen. So I'm going to ask the park board to stop doing that because that is stuffed. And I don't understand why they would want to do that. And certain members of my community have shown pictures to me of when that was happening. And I would really appreciate it if the park board would not discriminate and do that in a very nasty way, because certain other members of my community have shown disgust at the fact that that's happening. So.
And I'm not sure we all ought to be decorating the the stops. If everybody decorated the stops, it would be a bit of a mess.
I'm not over decorating, but I've done it for 38 years.
Well, any decoration, Donna, it's the it's the town's responsibility to decorate town property.
Please let me just continue. I appreciate what you're saying.
One more minute, Donna.
At Thanksgiving and a little ribbon or a snowman out at Christmas, people like it. And for the park board to rip it off in the dark of night is not acceptable. And people at my stop are not happy. And also, I want to say one other thing, and I appreciate your comments as well, but we were, I asked specifically if our stop was going to be turned into a parking lot. And I was told no, and I have that on record. And now we have a parking lot at our stop. So members of my community at Stop 21 are very unhappy about it because it seems to be very dangerous. It's a very tiny stop, a very constricted area with a lot of trucks going in and out because of the problems with the stop and and what's happening with the crumbling of the area. And so I'm just going to ask you to look at that again. We do not need a parking lot at Stop 21.
Okay, we don't have a parking lot there. Okay, Donna, but again, if you want to decorate your property, Donna, that would be fine, but you really shouldn't forget.
Please let me finish. This is public.
Anybody else have a comment?
Hi, this is Michelle Therese at 1608 Nichols Court. And thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to comment on the deer survey.
Public speaking. Thank you.
I, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, I have also heard, a lot of people have asked me, and I, you know, I can appreciate honestly that you guys have a lot going on, and this topic certainly takes a lot of time. And I can appreciate wanting to hold off on discussing it because other things are important, especially with the year end. But to say that you're not yet done yet, I've done so many surveys. And if you gave me a list of the addresses and the postcards, I could cross reference those and tell you the duplicates in a couple hours. So to say that is, it's just a little disingenuous. And we're really trying to build trust as a community with you guys. And and so.
Are you accusing the Clerk Treasurer's Office of putting their finger on the scale, Michelle?
I never said that at all. I was.
Well, you're sort of implying that.
No, 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 I'm saying that you're you're taking.
People are at public speaking.
No, 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 you're misunderstanding me. I am saying that it shouldn't take two months to tabulate the results. And because, oh, why would you think I would say that? I mean, no, 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 I'm saying if you gave me a list of addresses and the postcards, I could do it in a couple hours.
I'm trying to be off during pub.
So my my question, my question is, is if if there is a reason for you to delay it, that's understandable. You guys are busy. You have a big year end agenda. But just be honest with us, because to say that it takes two months is just disingenuous. And also, it was discussed in the past at a couple meetings that the postcards would be received and stamped and then turned over to the deer committee. And I would just like to know when that has changed. And if it's possible at the year end meeting, if you could just give us the total number of postcards you received, could you just count them and tell us you received so many responses?
And my understanding is there's upwards of seven hundred.
Okay, thank you.
And basically, the Clerk Treasurer has a lot of other jobs she's trying to do in addition to counting those. So this is sort of something she does when she has free time.
Okay, and that's understandable. But I thought we discussed in the past, and this is where things change so much that it's hard, you know, we think it's one thing. It was discussed in the past that they would be stamped in the office and handed over to the deer committee for tabulation, that if you watch the meeting.
Yeah, we decided that wouldn't work very well. So we, you know, there's there's nobody in town government who we feel is more, what's the word, trustworthy than the Clerk Treasurer's Office. That's why we gave it to them.
Right, but.
We really didn't want the deer committee discussing hanging chads.
Okay. And so I can appreciate that. But when these changes happen and they're not discussed in public forums, you know, it just makes things confusing for people. And I really, I really want to focus on, you know, just building trust here over this deer process.
Yeah, I do think this was discussed at at the last, maybe the town council meeting before that. But yeah, I understand what you're saying, though, Michelle.
Thank you.
Anybody else with public comments? If anybody has something they want to say and doesn't know how to raise their hand, just talk. Otherwise, council comments. Claims approval, Bill?
Check number 18501 through 18, I'm sorry, 18588, totaling $664,901.08. And payroll for November was $76,910.12. Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved. Is there a second? Mary Lou?
I said, I said.
Okay, if you want to vote?
Aye.
I'm an aye. John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker? Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion.
Oh, I second it.
All right. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Night, everybody.
Good night.